Welcome back to another Saturday evening at Tempo Afri TV with Ellie Naimo Talk Show. And today, we want to bring you some very, very important messages that we'd like to share with you all over the world, Africa, and all the people of the color all over the diaspora. And now closer to home, here in Minneapolis, we have an unrest war zone going on in our city, where many, many stores and front lines have been set on fire, while the protests continue to go on until this day. Today's May 30th, so it's been going on for almost the whole entire week over the death of George Floyd. Now, I'm going to give you guys a little bit more detail about what has happened starting Monday until now. And we have a special guest that we're going to bring on shortly after this introduction. And he is a city council who has been elected in Brooklyn Park. Now, we're going to exchange some of the things that are going on and give you guys a little bit inside in view on what we can do to help and support the communities, especially with the crisis that is happening now in Minneapolis and all over the United States spreading out. So to go into a little bit more detail about what happened on Monday. On Monday, May 25th, a black man, George Floyd, was killed by a white Minneapolis police officer around 8:00 PM in Minneapolis. The incident was horrific as the bystander watched pleading to let him breathe. The arrest was made after Floyd alleged attempt to use a $20 bill at Deli, which an employee identified as counterfeit. George Floyd is a Houston, Texas man who finds Minnesota his home and died in the scene of the incident while the cop compressed his knee on his neck for about seven minutes, even when the paramedic arrived on the scene. Derek Chauvin is the policeman identified to have killed George Floyd, while three other police officers witnessed. Thomas K. Lane Tao, two Tao, sorry, I'm having a hard time pronouncing some of the names, and J. Alexander Kang. Two policemen, Thomas and J. Alexander wrestled with George Floyd along with Derek, who ended up having his knee on his neck alone, right, at the time of his death. While one police officer, which is two Tao, stands facing the bystander. By the video that instantly went viral and the graphic images passed through social media caused an outrage. Derek Chauvin was not only trying to do his job, but went as far as being demonically possessed. That's the breaking point many Americans aggravated on the situation. To keep a knee on a man's neck even when he was already weak or dead, that's disturbing. Soon, George Floyd was taken by the paramedic and recorded to be announced dead at the hospital. With the results of preliminary autopsy, with the results of that, found no indication that Floyd died of the incident on the scene by Derek, by the police officer. But the combined effects of being restrained underlying health conditions, including culinary artery disease and hypertension heart disease and potential intoxicants in his system likely contributed to his death. That was what was announced at the hospital after the autopsies were resulted. Now, the family requested an independent autopsy. Now, the four police officers were still not prosecuted at the time, which altercated the protest to start marching, which was peaceful on May 26. Then later turned into a riot, breaking windows, destroying police cars, looting businesses and stores, and setting them on fire, including some apartments. Now, one is a low-income housing apartment and one is a brand-new apartment, which was ready for its grand opening. All that has been set on fire. The street rage as the war zone and the protests continued to retaliate with the police rubber bullets and tear gassing. On May 29th, Chauvin was arrested and charged with the third-degree murder and manslaughter for Floyd's death, with Hennepin County Attorney Michael Freeman saying he anticipated charges to brought against the other three officers at the scene of Floyd's death. So, the death of George Floyd on Monday was extremely sad and has reminded us of Eric Garner's death in 2014 in New York. I can't breathe. So, we're going to bring you more detail about this and we're going to talk about all the chaos that is going on now in Minneapolis, all the cities that are burning down. And our guest that we're going to bring in today is a very important guest who's going to, you know, give us their behind scenes. His name is Benjamin Osemun. He'll crack me on his last name soon as we bring him on. I'm having a hard time pronouncing it, so forgive me on that. He is a Brooklyn Park City Council who has been working with a lot of our metro transit city area in the communities and also who is a voice for the community as well. So, we're going to hear from him, so we'll ask a couple of questions and anybody who have certain comments that we'd like to touch on later, feel free to comment on this livestream as we continue to talk about racism in America and the chaos and what is to come in this country. So, let's bring on Benjamin.
Hello, good evening, Naima.
Good evening, Benjamin.
Thanks for having me on board. I just wanted to correct one thing, though. I am not yet a city council member. One of the contestants running for city council in Brooklyn Park in the East District.
Okay.
And my name is Benjamin Osemun. And before we continue, I would please, you know, ask for us to observe a short moment of silence for our brother that was brutally murdered.
Yes. Thank you so much, Benjamin.
May his soul and the souls of all the faithful departed rest with God in heaven. May God comfort and protect members of his family. Amen.
Amen.
Naima, as we continue, I would like to greet, you know, our different audiences that we have. And to the English-speaking audience, I say, peace be with you. To our Somali brothers and sisters, I say, nabat kuara. And to our French brothers and sisters, I say, que la paie souhaitable. To our Swahili brothers and sisters, I say, amani iwe nawe. And yes, to our Vietnamese brothers and sisters, I say, chuk bangga binga. To our Spanish brothers and sisters, I say, la paz este contigo. And finally, to our Igbo-speaking brothers and sisters, I say, ndebanyu udo de rono. Yes, Sister Naima, as you pointed out, about, you know, and thank you for that brief introduction to the killing or murder of our brother, George Floyd. You see, these killings and murdering has been going on for far too long. And one thing, it's not, and the killings are not limited to just the police. One thing that is common with all these killings are that they have a numerator or perpetrators. And those can be white, black, and Asians.
I totally agree on that.
But the common denominator, you know, or the victims are always black.
Yes.
So, that calls for reexamination of what we have been doing because call it diversity training or whatever you may call it, it's not working. Because the more we do that, the more we bury our brothers and sisters. So, that calls for a really in-depth rethink of our approach to this systemic issue that affects our community. But though tragic these events can be, though we are anger, angry, and wanted to take revenge.
Yes.
I greet you, my brothers and sisters, and say, peace be with you. In every tragic event, there are four things that come to play. One is the strength, which causes us to tap into our diverse strength of one family, which we are, to come up with lasting plan that can regularly be revisited for improvement. The second thing is opportunity, which is like the strength, which causes us to look for lasting solutions to these unending murders. Now, on the other side, we have threat. And that threat is causing us to damaging properties that belong to people that has nothing to do with these murders. And destroying businesses that even belong to our brothers and sisters.
Yes.
We also have weakness, which is like threat, which leads us to hopelessness and despair.
Yes.
Although there are anger and stupid comments by people you expect to know better, I call on you, my brothers and sisters, all over Minneapolis and St. Paul and the suburb, to focus on strength and opportunities rather than threat and weakness. And that is to let peace reign. To that effect, I had, you know, contacted the Brooklyn Park Police Chief and the engagement community, the community engagement officer for Brooklyn Park, Matt Rabe, to first find out from the police department what type of plan they have on hand to prevent such killing in Brooklyn Park. And I urged my brothers and sisters in different parts, in different cities, to do the same, to sit back and look at the bigger picture and determine what we can put in place to really have a lasting solution to these senseless murders. What we intend to do, you know, when I contacted the city police department, was first to find out what they have, the plan that they have on hand. And then, through this discussion that we're having this evening, come up with suggestions on what we can put in place that we can be revised, that we can visit maybe by, you know, by monthly or quarterly to improve that plan. And finally, I urge the police department to schedule a recurring meetings to work and see how those plans that were developed is really working. So, those are the three things that, you know, we will be discussing. And this city of Brooklyn Park, I contacted also the community engagement officer, connected me to the community engagement manager, who is planning a listening session for Brooklyn Park this coming Tuesday, June 2nd, in the evening, so that people can come back from work. And these are the type of things that we need to focus on right now, you know, to come up with lasting solutions, not just destroy buildings and things like that and then tomorrow, same thing keeps happening again. Destroying buildings and businesses, some of which belong to our brothers and sisters that are struggling like we are doing, doesn't really help the matter. So, please, my brothers and sisters, I call upon you to think twice. Yes, we are angry. Yes, I can't get even myself to look at that video. But we need to sit back and let peace reign and let us work on sensible plan that could really bring this over time to an end. The program that I'm suggesting is a worst-zero debt by police through good Samaritan policing. And we will unpack that when we meet with the police on Tuesday. So, without much ado, I know there are some people that are part of this panel discussion, some people that may be calling in. So, I open it up now and turn the mic back to you, Naima, so that we can include others in this discussion. Thank you very much.
First, I'd like to say thank you so much, Benjamin, for coming on today and to discuss all these things with us. You know, based on everything you have said, I do have a couple of questions following to that. And, you know, of course, with this riot and the chaos going on and looking at into the future of what is to come and what is to expect, and also how we can empower and, you know, rebuild the community as well. So, my first question to that would be, as far as the riot and the protest destroying the buildings, or I mean, the business owner who belong to a lot of the minorities, especially in Lake Street, throughout the whole entire Lake Street. I guess my only thought would be, now that it is destroyed, how are these people are going to be able to continue on with their businesses? I mean, is it the end of it where now property is going to be on a rise? Or will there be an infrastructure that will help them rebuild those communities and bring their lives back to what it was?
Thank you very much. And I think, you know, that is a very good question to the panel. And that's a very important question that, you know, we intend, you know, to bring up as we continue to move forward with the discussion. Now, when, you know...
And I know it might still be too early, too, but...
I'm sorry.
I know it might still be too early to know, too, as well, since this just happened in the last five days.
It's true, but these are things that we have to put on the table because if we don't, you know, as we continue the discussion, it will be lost. And these are small businesses, some of whom, you know, are struggling like we do. Some of whom are, you know, victims of this type of murder in their families or friends that they know, yet, you know, their businesses are being discussed, damaged and destroyed. And this destruction is still going on. In fact, it has peeled over to Brooklyn Park and they will be, you know, and they are planning some kind of demonstration here in Brooklyn Park. Please, please, we beg for peaceful demonstration to reign. No more destruction of properties. It doesn't do us any good.
No, it doesn't.
Okay? This is time for us to rebuild and start thinking of how to prevent what has happened repeating itself, you know, in the future. And a part of that plan is not only for the future. There are part of it could be something that we can implement immediately, right now, you know. And a part of that discussion will include us not stop destroying properties or businesses that are out there because we are rendering our brothers and sisters hopeless by doing so.
Yes. I totally agree. I know we're still early in the chaos. But the other question that I'm kind of curious about as well, now due to the pandemic, because I know we were in the state of an emergency lockdown and all of those things that are surfacing due to the pandemic. Do you think that some of the weaknesses from the people to cause them to even retaliate more relate to the pandemic as well, as far as the 40% of people that are not employed and also having a very higher rate of the black Spanish and the other minorities' communities that don't get the help that they need or to be restored on groceries and not having enough income as well to even build up and stock up on their food as well? Do you think a lot of that is also contributed to the madness that is going on right now as well?
Well, you know, my sister, I do not want to belittle what has happened. You know, like I said earlier, I find it difficult to watch that video because I know when I do, anger will set in. And when anger sets in, the devil takes control. And so, to say, you know, or to attribute the protest to COVID-19 might be a mistake because what is happening right now, the killing itself is really terrible. You know, if you watched the video. And then, to make matters worse, the comments by people that you expect to know better, okay, added to that fury and anger. Having said that, yes, there is also a problem that we face. And I hope and pray everybody out there and their families are well and safe. And that is the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, we have a forum that is looking into that. And I'm not going to, you know, touch more on that. But the point I want to get across, though, is that, yes, there is despair and hopelessness for businesses that are not getting the necessary support, you know, to reopen their business. And for many families from low income and to the elderly, you know, that do not have anybody to support them are facing right now. Now, I'm not going to sit here and say that that has something to do with the demonstration because that in itself is a separate problem. And the murder itself is another problem. So, the demonstration, as I can see it, is tied to the murder. Having said that, there could be, you know, some people that are frustrated because of the COVID-19 situation and not getting any help from anybody that is joining, that are joining the group, you know, to destroy, you know, properties in anger. So, again, you know, the COVID-19 is a problem and that needs to be fixed. And people need to be supported, you know, a low income. And there has been a disbursement of funds, you know, to the rich amongst us, the big businesses. But yet, you know, we have the small businesses, we have the elderly in our society, and we have the low incomes that are bleeding. And I would call on the respective state and federal government agencies to help our brothers and sisters, you know, with the aftereffect of COVID-19. However, we shouldn't belittle what happened to our brother George Floyd.
Yes. All right, let's check to see if anyone else is calling in or possibly have a questions before, because I have a lot of questions for you. So, we'll continue on. And, all right, I think we have someone online. Hello? Hello, is anyone there? Sorry, we're still trying to get someone that's calling online. Yes, hello? Hi, can you hear us? I think they left the...
Hello?
All right, they'll probably call back, so we'll wait for another caller. Soon as we do get a caller, we'll try to let them go ahead and cut in as much as possible. Then we'll continue on to the topic as well. So, one of my other concerns as I watched the whole chaos go through over George Floyd and the Black Lives Matters and the whole entire community, not just Minnesota alone, but the whole entire United States, which seems like it is divided right now at this moment. And we know it has always been there and the technology right now is just enhancing it more so we're able to see more actions. This is like a reminder of the old Civil War that we had on the streets in New York where black people were attacked with dogs and tear guns and water holes and things like that. It's almost similar to what is happening right now from the way I see it. So, if that has been going on for a while, you might know more about, you know, all the plans that are happening in the Department of Justice and also the law enforcement. What is their plan going on future as far as, you know, United States being united and having the equality as much as possible? Is this something that we're just going to continue to rise on as a trend? Or do you think that the worst has come where now we could finally see the light and what God has planned for America?
That is a very, very good question. If you recall, at the start of the program, I greeted people in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Swahili, Igbo, and so on and so forth. Now, I also mentioned that in this crime speech you correctly pointed out has been going on for years. There is a numerator, okay, or perpetrators of such heinous crimes. And they could be white, they could be black, and they could be Asians. But there is one common denominator of victims, black people. Now, so as we move forward, you know, and we look at this complex situation, if it were a black killing a black, what do we attribute that to? Do we go back out and, you know, destroy businesses and things like that? But, you know, although a majority of the times, you know, the situation is white police or white, a group of people killing blacks. One thing is common, blacks are the ones that have been going through this. And each time, you know, people come and demonstrate and do all sorts of things. And then, you know, diversity training is recommended, you know, for some people. And then, everybody forgets about it until it happens again. Now, the COVID-19 provides us as a nation an eye-opener. What do I mean by that? Well, we see cities, mayors, city councils, members, who are really at the, with direct contact of victims of such crimes and, you know, the pandemic, really playing a key role in putting together plans that work for the city. And you see how the federal government struggles because they are not close to the situation, you know. It is something that requires bottom-up whereby you have a strong city which feeds into the strong state government and the national level. So, the COVID-19 is an eye-opener and it calls for a city, a strong city council, city government. Currently, majority of the... Currently, majority of the people we have there have no clue on what's going on. And it's time, and that is the main reason I'm running, because I am experienced and I know ideas, I have ideas, which we will discuss coming next Saturday when I introduce myself to you and, you know, what I have in stock for the city of Brooklyn Park. But, you know, getting back to your question, we need strong city government. We need people that walk the talk with the community, that can, you know, go to the community and have ideas on what could help them. And that is why we contacted the city police chief to start that discussion. That discussion does not only end, you know, with the killing of blacks, but also it expands to forming what I call public-private emergency response team, which will involve the local businesses, leaders, and the big corporations, you know, within our environment. And as I'm saying this for Brooklyn Park in our community, I'm also urging our brothers and sisters in other ci, in other cities to do the same. And what would such an emergency response team do? You see, at the peak of this COVID nineteen, there was a time states were shutting their borders and hospital beds were not available. And it's just a question of time for it, for the lockdown to speed over to the city. Whereby if you don't have a, a hospital in your city, you know, you find it difficult to get, get into a hospital. With, like here in Brooklyn Park, we don't have a, a city hospital. But through creative partnership, okay? Which involves private, private and public-private partnership. We could work with the Maple Grove Hospital and the Fairview Clinic that we have here in Brooklyn Park to establish a satellite hospital, which will provide our needs for the community. But that's part of the discussion that we will have next week. You know, but in answer to your question, we need strong city government to be able to address what's going on in the nation with regard to COVID and all this killing. And that is why we are working with the city police to make sure that we come up with a plan, not just a plan, but a plan that will be revisited quarterly to improve it. And that's going to be part and parcel of the police department, the way we structure it so that nobody, as a police officer, could go out there and see somebody, be it a criminal or not, not think of good Samaritan first before acting. And if they do otherwise, okay? Things will be put in place in the, in the, in the plan to make sure that those people don't belong to the force anymore.
Wow. I mean, it's, it's a great message and, you know, I really, we really hope on you guys, especially the main leaders to even help lead some of our young generations who are gonna be the future leaders as well. And my leading, next question to that as well, you know, has myself, I'm from Ethiopia and there has been a lot of different minorities issues that I have seen, you know, myself as well. And my only concern with a lot of that is when we have a culture clash in the United States where a lot of these, for example, with the riot right now and the chaos that are going on, you know? A lot of our, you know, young cats who are still in high school and going to college are involved in something that they don't completely understand. Because everything that they have learned or they have taken in is rise from the surface. And a lot of that can also come from a very, very cultural background where there's a culture clash between what they learn outside as an American and what they learn at home has an Ethiopian, Somali, Nigerian, or whatever culture background they may come from. And I feel like many children are being lost in the United States among, you know, killing each other. Far too, you know, some of the things that we see, black-on-black crimes and, you know, of course, being an African here in America, you're considered black as well. So it contributed to the black outrage that is going on in this country. And so my, my leading question to that is, a lot of these young, young minorities that come from a multicultural background, how can we get their family or their parents engaged to know that it's important to teach your child the principles of this country that they live in now at this point? And also how they can be a great leader and have an opportunity to live peacefully in a very functional country as well? Whether it's opening up communities for them or, you know, having leader councils or people speak to them, how can we get the parents, mainly the parents, to get their kids involved and also to be able to teach them as well?
Thank you, my sister. That's, and I mean, gee, that's a very, very good question. There is a saying, you know, there was a time, you know, during one of the political rallies in Nigeria, when some of the kids that were demonstrating were asked, "Why are you demonstrating?" And they said, and, and why are you, you know, because some of them were carrying the plaque, the, the, the posters for one political party in the morning and in the afternoon, they'll be carrying that of a different political party. And one of the reporters asked them, "Why are you demonstrating?" Well, they said that they are demonstrating, you know, to make ends meet, you know, that to, for the political parties, whoever they are supporting at the time, you know, to give them some money, you know, to be able to buy food. And that concept, although was in Africa, is far too common here. Why do I say that? Well, you brought up the issue of contacting the families, okay? In most cases here in America, you have both parents, both dad and mom working. And the kids come back from school with nobody to help him or her with her homework. And sometimes they fall free to criminal-minded, you know, minded people. And that's how we lose them. And that's how they engage in such protests without really getting some background because there is nobody there to give them the background.
Yes.
And again, it goes back to what I am saying, that for us to address this, some of the systemic problem, you know, that our brothers, and our young brothers and sisters, you know, encounter here, we need strong city government. Take for instance where you have, you know, the families that work. We do not have an after-school program with our people volunteering to tutor our kids in our cultures and also help them with their homeworks. Now, we, there has been a recent proposal to the governor to build a cultural center.
Yes.
And some of the people that were making that proposal, I, I, I visited, I met with them. And I advised them that just calling it a multicultural center may not make it through the legislature, legislation. That we need to tie it to an after-school program. One thing I didn't mention to you, I was once the president of Nigerian Association of, Nigerian Association of Engineers in Minnesota. And during my time, time as a president, we, the Association of Nigerian Engineers, went on KMOJ, forced to reach out to our brothers and sisters, the young adults, to let them know that we, you know, that we have engineers as minorities. We have doctors that are minorities. We have lawyers that are minorities. And we called on these different professionals to emulate what we did then. Because that builds the aspiration of a child that has no hope.
Yes.
Not only thinks about football or basketball, you know, for a living. And after that visit to KMOJ and calling another, another professional, we also took it further to go and tell them that we will volunteer our professional time with an after, after-school program that will help some of these kids with their homework and start addressing and, you know, bringing down their temper and redirecting them to positive things, like some other professionals, including basketball and football because they are professionals too. But, you know, you have people like the kids, teaching them, working with them, and they will look and say, "Hey, I have people like this that are engineers, that are doctors, that are pharmacists. I wanna be like them someday."
Yes.
And that was why I asked the group that was proposing for the multicultural center to lace it or link it to an after-school program, mirroring what we did as the Association of Nigerian Engineers in Minnesota, in Minneapolis, to other cities. And that way, you know, you will see a change in culture and on understanding. And most of the people that are the professionals have lived in Africa and are here. So they will help them also understand what Africa is all about and build their courage on whatever they face, knowing that they have people like them that have gone through that process in the past.
Wow, your answer just gave me a lot of hope. It really did. Yes.
Well, that's, that's why, you know, I'm telling everybody, you know, we have people to walk the talk with the community. We just need to elect them to office, and I'm one of them.
I mean, that's the beginning, you know, because I feel like, you know, like the way you, you, you said and we have engineers, we have doctors, we have lawyers that are minorities. That's definitely a beginning tool because once these children acknowledge that, that they can do this, that they have the potential to do this and hoping that some of these leaders will be there to help guide them and be their footstep into a better future. Because the truth is, you know, we live in a country where you can become somebody. You have the potential, you have the ideas, you know, to let the world know that, you know, all minorities that are here and that are contributing into this country is that we are just as educational and as knowledgeable as the rest of the American citizens here.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Let's not forget though, you know, the main issue that we're facing right now, and that is the killing and the murder. That will always be there. And that is, you know, why the time is now for us to engage the police department and come up with concrete, solid plan that will be part and parcel of all police departments.
Yeah.
Okay, that will be revisited, revisited in each city quarterly, bimonthly, or semi-annually to improve that, okay? Now, we should stop all the destruction of businesses because we are affecting people that will help us.
Giving them bad example, yes.
Achieve that. So please, my brothers and sisters, I plead with you. I understand your anger. I am hurtful, like I confessed before. I can't even get myself to look at that video because I know where it will take me and I don't wanna go there.
And going on to the, to the police officers, I know there's still a lot of work that needs to be done in the, in the police department and the justice system. And, you know, there is that side to where police officers, when they come to the scene or they get called for a situation, they don't fully understand the situation or what happened to it. So when they go back to their departments and talk to their other colleagues, it's almost like a scenario that they, they, they don't even know what to do with it because it's either a cultural situation or it's just another black-on-black situation. And so then it just, the situation gets left blank and does not get looked back into it. And I feel like, you know, the, the police that works in the department as well should acknowledge that there are minorities, there are people of different cultures and every situation that happens in their life could be something that is a part of them. And if they want to go ahead and help serve those communities, that they should listen to them as well and try to help them solve the problem. You know, like there's a saying, you know, it's not about what you say, it's how you say it. So if the police come face-to-face with the community or the minorities to try to understand each other, their culture differences in how they can make America a better grid and how police can handle their job in any better way that they could, instead of just going back to their colleagues and leaving the situation blank as what would normally happen because they don't understand. And I don't know if it's just a lack of not wanting to understand or not wanting to, you know, look deeper into the culture. Because when you see somebody's situation, you look at it, you know, is it their fault? Is it something they're doing intentionally? Or is this, is this like some kind of a taboo or, or a problem that have lived with them and that they need help? They could be crying out for help. Maybe they just don't have the answers to their questions. And if the police have the answers to some of those questions, they can help answer those as well. I feel like a lot of those miscommunication and the dialogues between the police and the community or even mostly the culture background who are just painted with the same brush has the black community, a lot of it plays a fact there. So my main question to that is, how can the police department continue on serving the country while at the same time trying to understand their community in how they can solve situations?
Thank you very much. You know, that's, that's a very, um, um, great, you know, a great, a great question. See, I mentioned something about a meeting that we intend to have with the police chief in Brooklyn Park, which I'd called Good Samaritan Policing. What do I mean by that? Some of us that are, you know, that are Christian know about the Good Samaritan story. And it goes to, you know, it's a story about a stranger that was robbed, okay? People from the, the community of the stranger that was robbed came and just walked by and not do anything.
Yeah.
And the lawyers came and passed by, you know, the doctors came and passed by. But a good Samaritan came and saw this brother, a Samaritan that is a stranger.
Yeah.
Okay, but has the heart of a good Samaritan. Picked up this stranger, nursed them up and took them to an, a hospital where they were cared for and told those hospital, uh, people that, give them some money and said, "If you spend more on my way back, I will come back and I will pay you." That is the policing that we need in every city. That is the policing we need in every state. And that policing is what we intend to discuss with the city of Brooklyn Park to make it a model for all. Because if it is part and parcel of them and part, a parcel of what give them promotion or get them dismissed, you know, from their profession, believe you mean, okay, that will get their attention. Now, also at the beginning, I mentioned that the killings and murders are not limited to the police. We have the hospitals and we have our jobs, various works. Queer, our soul and our eager to do better are being diminished by some people. This Good Samaritan policing goes across the board. And every organization, no more should we be talking about this so-called diversity training because it's a joke. Because the more we talk about the training, the more we get these claims and we get these atrocities going place, taking place. And when you ask them, you say, "Oh, I have been to diversity training, you know, and I realized what I did." So, so it's more like a checkmark for them. But it's time, and the time is now to change that. And this discussion ought to be going on at different cities around this nation. The COVID nineteen did good thing, and that is... The COVID-19 did good thing, and that is make the cities realize that we need very strong city government. And we need city council members and mayors that really walk the talk with the community, that understand these problems and have innovative way of addressing the enormous systemic problem that face our nation. And that starts from the bottom, and that starts from the city government to filter to the state government and then the national. And that is why I am running.
Wow. I really appreciate you so much for all of your answers you have given us and we, you know, we encourage everyone to continue to watch this video and share it as well. We're coming close to our time here. So we'll go ahead and, you know, close up the, our topic as we continue on. And hopefully we can, you know, continue to have this topic in the near future as well here at Tempo Afri TV. I've asked, you know, a lot of my most important questions. I feel like these are the things that has been sitting in my heart for so long as I watch the changes transgress here in the United States as well, from kindergarten all the way to, to college and going out into the real world, trying to get a real job. And, you know, there are a lot of issues here in these countries, but I feel like they are solvable, they are controllable. As we all say right now, you know, with the whole Black Lives Matters and that racism is a disease and that is what really destroying this country more than anything. So my last question to that to close our conversation now, as far as racism here in America, whether it's by, you know, your, your minority background, your ethnic background or language difficulties or any things like that, how do, I know racism is, is something that's been there for centuries, is a disease. Even in Africa, we see tribalism, you know, where one tribe thinks they're better than the other. One side is more inferior, one side is more superior. But here in this country where you have biracial childrens, you have mixtures, you have different cultures that are put in one melting pot. Now, how, what do you think the future looks like as far as racism goes? Do you think there's going to be a point in America where everyone will be like-minded or come with one mindset? Or do you think it's still going to continue to divide more?
Man, sister, you have so fantastic question and great questions. Well, with regard to the future of racism in America, I can't tell you that I know where it will be. But one thing that I can tell you though, is that it takes one individual, an individual that preaches oneness and that lives oneness. Now, if you recall at the beginning of this program, I greeted the audience in different languages, from different parts of the country, of the globe. And when I did, I made, I greeted them in those languages, I meant it, I meant it because we are diverse, especially here in Brooklyn Park, but we are one family.
Yes.
Okay? And with that oneness in mind, it takes one person, not the general public, like I reached out to the police department. There's going to be so many other cities that might be copying the same thing. And I wrote an article on COVID-19, which I really place on this oneness of family. Now, somebody might say, "Okay, that's diversity." Well, it's more than diversity training. It is living the talk with the community. And it starts with getting people that have the knowledge, that think alike to city government because I keep stressing that's where it starts, okay? It might not happen tomorrow, it might not happen in 10 years' time, but it starts with one person. And I am, and you are, and other people in different cities are those one people that can start that right now by reaching out to their police department, by reaching out to the hospital, their agencies that they believe, that belong to, that are racially harassing them and say, "No more, we need to have a talk on how to move forward peacefully." The key word is peacefully and in harmony. No matter, there's going to be distractions, there's going to be obstacles on the way. But with oneness and one family in mind, with one goal, and that is the betterment of the community, starting with the city level and moving to the national level, we shall conquer.
Wow. One peacefully. I totally agree to that. Yes. Thank you so much, Benjamin, for having us, for being on with us today and we really appreciate your time and your courtesy. We'll continue to watch the election and, you know, we're, we're here as a community to, to walk with our leader as well. And I like the, the comp, I mean, the quote that you have, it says, "A new, a new voice to walk the talk with the community."
Exactly.
Yeah. So give us a little bit more detail behind that.
Well, couldn't we say, you know, walk the talk with the community? We talked about, um, issues that face the community. We talked about the after-school program, we talked about taxes, you know, being raised for the elderly in our community, you know, and the low incomes being impacted by such tax hike through rent from their, their landlords. Yet, you know, you have people in city government that are receiving $10,000 raise and while people on first income that are elderly are being left stranded, struggling to meet their, their, you know, their mortgage and sometimes their rents. And the low income that is working 24/7 to even pay their rent, and I say this, and then you are hiking it up, and more, more or less pushing them to homelessness, okay? Now, a person that walk the talk with the community will realize these things, which I realize, and come up with creative ways. Yeah, the city government need money, resources, you know, and most of it comes from property tax. But there are creative ways where those problems can be addressed. If you, if the city is walking the talk with the community, the taxes for the community will not be going up by, by the, you know, by the, their city staffs are getting raises. A city that is walking the talk with the community, okay, suffers with the community and rejoices with the community. And that helps because when you go to the community and ask, "We need your help," they will know that the ones that they are giving you, that you're spending it wisely. Luckily, one of the council member, lady, a woman that I'm running against was asked by a, a resident in our district here. Why is it, what plan does the city have for the low incomes and the elderly that are on first income and those that have a nominal income with regard to city spending? Do you know the answer she gave? She told this resident, "I don't understand your question."
Wow.
Now, somebody that is walking the talk with the community understands such questions. I understand that question. I walk the talk with the community. I feel the pain in the community, I suffer with the community and I will rejoice with the community. And I, when I get into the city, I will change that narrative from what it is today, not understanding the suffering of our brothers and sisters and our fathers and moms that are elderly, retired, on first income and the low incomes that are struggling to pay their rent. That narrative will change when I get there and that is walking the talk with the community.
Wow. That's very unique. That's very unique. Well, thank you so much, Benjamin. Benjamin, I'll still try to pronounce your last name.
Aseminem.
Aseminem.
That's pretty good.
Thank you so much, Benjamin Aseminem, for joining us today. May God bless you in your journey and we'll continue to watch the election. Thank you.
And you too, and thank you for having me. Please, please, brothers and sisters, peace be with you.
Yes.
Let peace reign. Please stop destroying our community. We need a strong community to move forward. Thank you and God bless you.
God bless. Thank you, everyone, for watching. That was our special guest that we just had on today, who is elected to run for the city council. Please continue to watch and, you know, and continue to engage. We're going to have this topic once again in the near future and we'll continue to watch on our brother Benjamin Aseminem.
That's right.
Still having a hard time saying it.
That's all right.
And, and join us again next time on Tempo Afri TV at Ellen Animal Talk Show and have a wonderful night. Stay safe and let's have peace and justice for George Floyd. Now, George, George was a wonderful man. He was a wonderful Christian man, done a lot of great things and he definitely does not want his remembrance in agony. So let's respect that and let's not destroy our brothers and sisters' life, life longing. Have a great night.
Good night.